Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September twenty-second Board of Education meeting. If you would, please stand and join me with. I'd like to have a moment of silence for the following individuals. Kent Woodward Jr., a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Dorothy Keller, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Judy Blair, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Donald Padet, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And James Tennessee, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School. Thank you. A couple of presentations this evening, and the first is the proclamation, so I'll read that now. North Syracuse Central School District food service staff have contributed to the health and educational development of our district's children by making nutritious breakfasts and lunches that help students improve grades, increase attention, reduce absence, party rates, and improve behavior. The food service staff continues to make positive changes in order to provide nutritional meals that meet the dietary guidelines for Americans and are a dedicated group of professionals. To honor the food service staff of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments, I, Michael Morizio, President of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare the week of September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five through October third, two thousand twenty-five as food service appreciation. Do I have a motion to approve that proclamation? Favor? Questions, comments? All those in favor? If we can give them a round of applause. Is there anyone here this evening? Okay, we are entering BPT season, so I'd like to welcome Chris to pass off with an overview.
So we are excited to kick off our BPT presentations. They're going to run from September through December. It's a great opportunity for our BPTs, our school leadership teams, to share where they are, what they're working on, and hold dialogue with the board for questions. So I'm going to ask, what I want to do tonight is provide a little bit of an overview. The purpose of these presentations are to provide consistent data-informed updates from all eleven schools. You'll see that we work really hard to have a consistent approach, consistent goals that fall under our strategic plan. We're going to be highlighting our student outcomes in reading, math, reading performance in the secondary levels, and graduation rates for the district. We're going to align our school goals with the MTS, us and district priorities. And what we really want to do is be able to provide a space and time for dialogue between the Board of Education and our eleven leadership that in the first two presentations. The centerpiece of our BPT, this work, is about MTSS or a multi-tiered system of support. It's really a framework to provide that academic, behavioral, social, emotional support for all of our students. The approach that you can see highlighted here, where everybody gets universal support. Tier two are students who have some need that may need additional attention or time. And tier three are really intervention, intensive intervention for students with intent. Format, what we'll be doing over the next few months will be approximately twelve slides. Group has been focused to deliver their presentation to about fifteen minutes, allowing a few minutes for questions for the board and responses from the team. They're going to provide you a building overview of mission, MTSS goal. Some of the data that you'll see presented will be our AIM web, ELLA and math data, region's results, graduation rates, and their SMART goals. The other piece of this is the emotional competency with BIMAS, focus, celebration, and the next steps. What we'll see over the next several meetings will be, starting with our elementary schools, then our middle schools, and then our secondary schools. And then, last but not least, December, on December first, will be the North Syracuse Early Education Program. And what we have planned for the district, the Board of Education, is for the focus and provide several opportunities for some good conversation, discussion, starting how our schools are doing, but also for our, our leadership team being filled. Share the work that they're really proud of. So before we get started, I believe, is it Bear Road first tonight? Before we get started, Bear Road, any questions about?
Welcome. Good evening, at works. I'd like to introduce the Bear Road folks that are with us tonight. To my right is Mrs. Annie Cordy. She's our kindergarten teacher and co-chair of the team. Then we have Karen DiVerdo, who is with us with AIS, and Jennifer Sully, who's our school counselor. So this year at Bear Road, we've increased about ten students. We have two additional staff members in the instructional area. Gone up a little bit with IEPs and special education students, to about twenty-five percent of our population. And we do have an additional six-one class this year, so we have fourteen students in the two groups. Eight had to relocate because we were not able to accommodate that many classes as we are both at Bear Road. Our free and reduced lunch went up about four percent, and our number of students in last year were thirty, thirty-one going up. So our mission, our mission has remained pretty much the same throughout the last few years. It's to build a solid foundation for learning by supporting each other and achieving our full potential. Where everyone is a valued member of our KWS Bear Road Elementary Committee. Our vision, our collective team differentiation model, and social emotional climate will ensure that all members of the KWS Bear Road Elementary Committee will reach their full potential and feel that they are valued members of the community.
As of twenty-sixth, our school will implement a consistent data-driven process to improve reading outcomes through the MTSS process. The SST will meet regularly, regularly to review intervention effectiveness for students in tiers two and three, find strategies, and ensure supports are delivered. Evidence of success will include documented meeting notes, intervention plans with a three percent growth on Ames Web Plus reading assessment. During weekly CTM meetings, data is discussed, reviewed, and evaluated, keeping four critical questions in mind. What do we expect students to learn? How will we know if students have learned it? How will we, how will we respond when students do not learn it? And how will we respond when some students already know it? Our graduation rate, we will address the rate by reducing our building chronic absenteeism from eighteen percent to sixteen percent. This will share an attendance matters handout at the beginning and midpoint of the year, encouraging consistent attendance. Teachers will contact families with attendance concerns. Also provide incentives to encourage all students to come to school every day. As you see, we, on the left there, we have our perfect attendance. During our Friday announcements, each teacher recognizes a student's perfect attendance.
Here's our twenty, twenty-two, five, twenty-two, six math proficiency data. For the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, Bear Road showed fifty-five percent proficiency in math on the spring Ames Web assessments. Our goal for this school year is to increase proficiency to fifty-eight percent. Bear Road was forty-eight percent proficient on the New York State Math Assessment for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, with a goal to reach fifty-one percent proficiency this school year. This school year, we will be using Ames Web composite math scores to measure our proficiency, as well as the New York State Math Assessments for third and fourth grade. We are hoping to reach our goals by implementing a multi-tiered system of support. This will be done by utilizing our grade level CTT time to have data-driven conversations about students and instruction, implementing win groups to meet students' specific needs, and utilizing our AIS department to provide evidence-based interventions. We will be using data from into math, math workshop, number talks, do the math, bridges, and district benchmark assessments to guide our discussions, plan instruction, and provide interventions. Here's our twenty-two, five, twenty-two, six reading proficiency data. For the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, our building showed a forty-nine percent proficiency in reading on the spring Ames Web assessments. Our goal for this school year is to increase proficiency to fifty-two percent. Our building was forty percent proficient on the New York State ELLA assessment for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, with a goal to reach forty-three percent proficiency this school year. In this school year, we will be using Ames Web composite reading scores to measure our proficiency, as well as the New York State ELLA assessments for third and fourth grade. We're hoping to reach our goals by implementing a multi-tiered support, system of support. Similar to math, this will be done by utilizing our grade level CTT time to have data-driven conversations about students and instruction, implementing win groups to meet students' specific needs with tier-two instruction, and utilizing our AIS department to provide evidence-based tier-three interventions. We will be using data from CKLA, Hagerty, Really Great Reading, Sunde, Lexia Core, Lexia Core Five, and various progress monitoring tools to guide our discussions, plan instruction, and provide interventions.
So this is our BIMAS data from the spring of twenty-twenty-five. On the top of those triangles, we chose to look at the, the SEL Core Competency Scale. I made a chart just to show the, like, total of the two green sections for each one over the past three screening periods. So we took a look and found, as in years past, our lowest area, our lowest SEL area is self-awareness, which is the ability to understand your own emotions, thoughts, and values, and how those influence your behavior. So our goal is to increase that percentage this school year from sixty-nine percent to seventy-four percent. So for our tier one, we have been doing positivity project, which we've continued to work as a team to kind of customize to our school, updated our assemblies, our incentives, our morning announcements that we do. And we're also piloting Character Strong, which is a different SEL curriculum. It kind of in combines, like, character added and some of the other SEL-type things we do all into one program. So we're excited about piloting that. We're thinking it's going to be really great. Teachers do classroom meetings. They do the positivity project lessons. They build great relationships with their students. And then, also for tier one, between the ADAPEP counselor and myself, we provided, delivered about three hundred and thirty classroom SEL lessons at Bear Road last school year. Tier two and three, it's largely is small group counseling. Last year, I saw about twenty-five percent of our students for ongoing counseling, small group counseling support, which is a lot, focusing on coping skills, social skills, impulse control, things like that. And then, we are also lucky to have support from Premisone and Liberty Resources therapists in our building, but there is a lot of need. There's more than we're able to meet in any given school year.
A lot of building celebrations. We do many programs and have a lot of initiatives, but I will just highlight a couple of them. We brought back Family Engagement and Literacy Night after not having done it for about five years, which was a nice outreach to our community. Our Math Con, under the direction of Joanna Andrews, one of our fourth-grade teachers, has really taken off at Bear Road. Years ago, five out of the top ten were students from Bear Road. Last year, six of the top ten were from Bear Road, and we take the number one spot to claim also, as our student placed first out of the top ten. But what I'd really like to call your attention to is the cohort growth on the New York State ELLA and math. We had students in third grade in twenty-twenty-four. Number of proficiency for the third grade was thirty-one percent. Last year, when they left us from fourth grade, the proficiency for the fourth graders, forty-seven percent. Just a sixteen percent growth for those students that have left us at Bear Road. Again, in twenty-twenty-four, for the math proficiency, it was thirty-nine percent. And when they left us, same students, that's a fourth grader, it was sixty-three percent, or twenty-four percent growth. And we're very proud of our fourth-grade staff under AIS, for having achieved those results. Any questions, if you have any?
I just would like to say that those numbers you just showed us there at the end, especially the math proficiency going up by almost twenty-five percent, is very impressive. So that's great work from everyone in the entire building. I know that, you know, everything's connected. That goes to all of the teachers, all the staff, and as well. So it's very encouraging to see numbers like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got some good things, I guess. First of all, I want to thank Principal Olivia. Thank you for everything that you do. You know, you have five hundred-some students, but our high school principals are responsible for less than three hundred kids. So our elementary principals work way beyond. You know, many school districts in this central New York are now adding vice principals. And also, thank you to all the staff. You're amazing. I was there, so I know it's a great school, dedicated to all the work that you do. And my thing is, scores are wonderful, but are the kids enjoying school? Are they enjoying reading? Are they enjoying doing math? Are they enjoying being with each other? That's what I care about. I don't necessarily worry about test scores. As they're coming up, and I want to thank you for that. These are amazing. For the school board, sixty-three percent is amazing, proficient. And same with the reading. It's excellent. I did get to get over there, because I delivered some things for my church. It's so awesome to meet your former students, as Olivia knows, whose children now go through your school. And another young man who was in my room at Bear Road, his, his boy is going to your school, and they just love your school. However, I am not pleased, and I haven't been pleased, with class sizes. I have said this over and over. I said it during the summer when something could have been done. I will not support twenty-four and twenty-five kids in a, in a in a fourth grade. I never had that at the end of my career. I had it toward the beginning. But that is, when you want test scores to go up, Dr. Ward, you need to have smaller classes. And sending them to another school is ridiculous. I've said this over and over and over. And now, we have two more. Get a chart each week with other kids. If they come in, they got to go to this school. We could have solved this problem. Now you can't. School started, plus they have another specialized class. This could have been taken care of. I'm not thrilled with it. And I, and you can say, oh, this is a gotcha moment. No. The board knows. I've been saying this forever about class sizes. Twenty-four, twenty-five, not correct. And that's it. Thank you.
By the way, thank you. I appreciate all this. I love seeing the building celebration and whatnot. I just wanted a quick clarification, because I was looking at last year compared to this year. So I love the, obviously, the cohort growth, thirty-nine to sixty-three, and thirty-one to forty-seven. Could you explain? So last year, your goal going from spring twenty-four to spring twenty-five was fifty-six to sixty-one for math proficiency for Ames Web. But looking at, obviously, what actually transpired, it looks like we went down last spring. So what's the difference between, like, the, you know, the big jump of cohort compared to, you know, that, that dip with, like, not making your goal from last year?
Well, I would say that one factor is that we have just under a hundred students that we cannot service in math in particular.
Less, less on that and more on the, like, the difference between those two numbers. So like, where do we get the, the cohort coming up being so expansive, but the goal doesn't seem to match the cohort number? I'm just, I'm confused on how those intertwine, like.
So kindergarten, first, second, third grade don't really, can't target that instruction in math, because we don't have enough section.
So it's just, so the cohort is just a zoomed-in look on third to fourth, but the other one?
The cohort just shows the growth between when the children are in third grade and then the same children, their growth that they make when they're in fourth grade, whereas the other statistic is the third and fourth grade combined.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now I'd like to welcome Roxborough.
You just put care, sorry.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to share some information about Roxborough Elementary this evening. First, to take a look at some of our demographic information, we are remarkably consistent in our overall enrollment, the difference of blood students. Our free and reduced numbers stayed pretty close to one another. We did add a couple of extra special programs to our building this year, which brings in about thirty-five or so students from Head Start and Skate joining us here at the Roxborough family. And then our transient numbers, our students in and out, again, pretty consistent from year to year. Our mission and vision, give a moment to read that. And our strategic plan, our MTSS goal, also is going to be focusing on, on a couple of different pieces here. We're going to really implement a true MTSS model at Roxborough. So to do that, you're going to see a lot of talk. We heard earlier tonight about weekly CTMs or collaborative team meetings, collaborative team times, where we talk about and analyze data, where we talk about students that are eating the mark in terms of learning grade level standards, where we also talk about students that may need a little bit of extra support at that tier-two level, meet grade level standards. You're going to see a lot of talk about who we decide to put into different win groups, that tier-two group that you saw and heard earlier from Kristen from Olivia. We're going to be implementing a true SST school support team meeting, where we, again, sit down and talk about students who aren't really responding at the tier-two level. What else do we need to do differently to make sure that those students are achieving success, either academically, behaviorally, or socially and emotionally? And we'll be having all kinds of, in terms of measures of success, we'll have meeting minutes that are going to reflect these conversations. I'm excited about the, the detailed conversations that our teachers are going to be having about student growth, student work as they, as they work through different grade level standard. Oh, sorry. Next piece is our student attendance piece, as we work towards hopefully building and improving the school graduation or our district graduation rate. Attendance has been a struggle for us at Bear, or Bear Road, at Roxborough Road. Wow, that was a blast from the past, huh? At Roxborough Road, it's something we've worked really hard at. We've made some, some moderate improvements over the years. You know, even, even though our overall chronic attendance rate is not the greatest at twenty-four percent, that number still doesn't reflect the amount of growth that our, our students have made. We had one student in particular, I'm thinking of, there's many others like him, but last, the school year prior, he was at about a hundred days of missed school. He knocked that number in half last year. So we've made tremendous progress in, in reducing our absenteeism, but that's still being considered chronic. So while we haven't necessarily hit the, the mark that we've been going for, we've been making some, some great strides in terms of improving overall attendance. We do the best we can to prove attendance on half-days. Our special area folks do a wonderful, wonderful job of planning what we call a half-day huddle at our school, where we bring the whole school together for a school-wide assembly. And we talk about different character pieces, highlight difference, events happening throughout the school, and bring in presenters and things along those lines. We do attendance awards. We do attendance breakfast. If you think of it, we probably have given it a shot to try to improve our overall attendance at Rock. Yeah, we've done raffles, yeah, tried to incentivize them to get kids to come to school.
So looking at our reading proficiency data, we use the, the Ames Web assessments. And in the spring of twenty-twenty-five, thirty-seven point six of our students, percent of our students scored within the proficient range on Ames Web Plus. It's a slight decrease, unfortunately, of one percent from the previous year. On the state assessment, however, we saw an average increase of six percent on our scores. We're really excited by that, and we're hoping to see the growth continue. This is our fourth year in CKLA, and I feel that having a solid reading program has really started to take effect in our students and our success. We successfully exceeded our goal of twenty-five percent from last year, which is some of the strategies that we're implementing. We are introducing diagnostic assessments, such as Ames Web Plus, Hagerty, and CKLA. With these assessments, we're able to drill down on the specific instructional needs of our students and review this data during our weekly CPM meeting. We are, as Matt had said, we're kind of doing win a little bit differently. It's more, it's a solid MTSS model. We are going to be working with our skill-based targeted intervention groups, and those are based on grade-level essential standards that our classroom teachers picked out this past summer. Math proficiency. Our spring, in spring of twenty-twenty-five, thirty-eight point two percent of our students scored within the proficient range on the Ames Web Plus Math Assessment, which was a slight decrease from the previous year. And on the New York State Math Test, we saw an average increase of ten percent, successfully exceeding our goal of thirty-two percent that we set last year for proficiency. We chart goal and our math assessments, we are focusing on administering common assessments and reviewing that data during our weekly CPM meeting. Um, having students set personal achievement goals based off their achievement on these assessments. And, um, we are continuing to support grades one through four for AEIS math instruction.
Okay, at Roxborough Elementary, um, we focus on the social awareness core competency from BIS. Uh, the social awareness competency, um, gauges, how well students can interpret social situations, show empathy and build respectful, positive, positive relationships with others. And this year, 16% of our children fell into the high-risk concern on the social awareness core competency category, which is a decrease of 4% for last year. So we're very excited about that. Last year we had 20% of our students fall into that range. We will continue to, um, we continue with PBIS and positivity project. And we also implement skill building in our counseling staff, like they, they focus on topics like self-control, following directions and school behavior. We also, um, have our student support team and in our tier one, they focus on teaching the FEL skills. And on the morning announcements, uh, our counseling team had like a little mindful message every day that gives like a breathing technique, self-reflection imagery. And we also host restorative circles and professional development as well as many other small group interventions and support. At Roxborough Elementary, I feel like we're lucky, grateful and blessed because we truly have amazing support from our community. Uh, Pro Act, for example, they donate, school supplies, they donate to our food pantry, they come and they volunteer to read to our children. St. Margaret's Food Pantry provides food for about 30 families each month. St. Matthew's Church in Liverpool helps out with food donations for our families. This year for school supplies, we had support from D's Diner, the Cicerone Methodist Church, the Matty Dell Market, the North Star Nutrition, the Emmanuel Lutheran Church, Mr. Kev tree even brought me some stuff tonight that I still have. The, the Salina Democrats, the district office actually brought over some donations too, Kenny Drugs. Valentine Gardens brought us 50 backpacks with school supplies. Driver's Village brought us 100 backpacks with school supply, filled with school supplies. And we also do something called Breakfast Club where we invite each grade level, one at a time, one grade level at a time, to come to school in the morning and have a little breakfast with their families. And we try to reach out to community members so they are, they come in and are guest readers. So this year Ashley Kafaro came from the Channel Nine News, Jason Smurl came from Syracuse Met, Adam Weitzman came, the owner of Upstate Shredding, um, and Pat Young, Mrs. Young is the teacher, he's a musician, he's a local musician. And Jen Di Bianco also came and brought to our kindergarten students. So that was fun. And then we had a wellness night combined with a book fair and several vendors came to that event. We had the Finefry Library, the Matty Dell Fire Department, well-known Rising Rock Stars, Girl Scouts, Anadog County Sheriff's Department. We had, um, the Naughty Nets Life Clinic, um, contact snippets, our own nurses and our PCC. So that was kind of like support from the community. And then we did a whole bunch of things to build school community at Roxborough Elementary. This year we had, um, our annual family fun night and we had 92 families attend and that was 250 people. And that was in March and we got, we got great time. Uh, we did something different this year because I was, I'm currently in AIF, but I was formerly in family engagement. So we did something called Transition Breakfast where we invited each grade level to come in June and meet the next year's teachers. So if you were in first grade, you came and met the second grade teachers. If you were in kindergarten, you met the first grade teachers. We showed a little video and we had a little passport and they had to go to the different teachers. And we gave out information on the CKLA, the math, FEL and information on attendance. And we did, oh yeah, oh yeah, that's right. And we gave everyone a school supply list in June so they had it. Um, we also did something this year called Cooking with Conrad and we had, um, families come in and learn how to make meals on a budget. That was very well attended and I think it went pretty well. It was really. Um, we did four perfect attendance breakfasts. And what I like about the perfect attendance breakfast is that every trimester it starts over. So if you didn't have perfect attendance first time, you're eligible for the next time. We kind of break it up. We chunk it up. We had to have four because in December we had enough people, we had so many people, we had to have two. And then we have two award ceremonies at the end of the year to celebrate our students. And then we did something too this year called the Grab and Go Event on a half day where we invited families to come in and just shop in our, for free. Um, all, we gave them clothing, food and books and they came in for one or two hours? Hour and a half. So they came right after school. We did it right at school ended at like noon. I think it was like 12:30.
Like one, one thirty.
Yeah. And they came in and we gave them bags and they were able to take as many things they needed. And I think that's about it. And just as a little side note, when I was in family engagement, I documented every single thing that I did. And I had 2,578 communications with parents and students from when I started in December till the end of June. So that was a lot of record keeping. But I think it, I think it was worth it. I really liked that family fun night when we saw, I started to see how many people and families, especially kids that have like attendance problems start to show up at these events. I don't know, it just made my heart, yeah, it made my heart very, very full. Thank you. Okay. We're ready for the questions.
I'll start. Thank you much for the presentation. I really appreciate, um, all this with us. So amazing to see our community come together and such a, and the real, the community that really needs. They do a great job of that. Really takes a special person to join that campus and, and I really appreciate everything they do for our community. Um, looking at the math efficiency data, I'm just, I, I'm curious on what, um, your opinions are on what, you know, causes the discrepancy between the AIMS Web and, uh, the New York State testing, you know, because as you see like your, it was kind of shaky on the AIMS Web, but then, I mean, it hit it out of the park with the, the New York State going up 10%. That's, that's, yep. So where do you see like that, um, difference coming?
Well, are you going to go? AIMS Web is the entire building. So, um, you know, we have many students that come in that don't really know they have five fingers on their hand. So we are teaching them this is five. Um, they don't have a lot of number sense. So I think those numbers, K1 and 2, where they're just still trying to build just a number sense that's added in. And you see the work that our teachers, our classroom teachers have put into math and that's where we get the third and fourth grade assessments. They've, you know, really hammered hard on getting our kids to be proficient.
And you know, another thing we're trying this year because we think the second graders and third graders sometimes like to click on the task when they're taking it.
Yeah.
So we did a little something different this year and we saw already a tremendous growth with it. We went into the room as a team. So we had what, three or four people in one classroom? I'm assigned to these five students and I'm making sure that there's no clicking or I'm making sure that you're focused.
They're giving us an honest effort.
Yeah.
Really demonstrate what they are trying to know.
Trying to make sure that our data is clean.
Yeah.
Because in second, third and fourth, they're at a chrome buff.
Yeah.
And they're on their own. So that was a little worrisome, especially because we saw last year's second graders not do well at the end of the year. And we're like, I don't know about this. And it's funny because they did, we already looked at them the third graders and they've already made so much more growth. So we're just not sure if it's with the end of the year and.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question was where, where can, you know, like, kind of do everything to make it better for.
Yes, but we're really breaking it down and we're going in those rooms and we are, I'm sitting with these five kids and just making sure they're seeing their scrap paper for math.
We want them to be able to show everyone how successful they truly are. And I don't think that the computer-based data always allows that.
I, I appreciate your honest thought process. Thank you so much.
It's awesome.
Hey, I just wanted to make a quick comment that, um, I, I really appreciate the, the amount of work that you all are putting into making creative solutions to a difficult problem that, and, and like you said, the numbers may not necessarily show, um, some of that stuff. Um, and, and I, I know in my day job and there's other folks here that, you know, putting on the events and types of things that you're talking about in addition to your actual work as a teacher and administrator is extremely difficult and it takes a lot of time and effort. So I appreciate you all doing that because, um, this is the type of stuff that makes it a better environment and that ends up where the scores go up. So I just want to make sure the whole board realizes how, how, how much work I'm sure goes into it behind the scenes and it sounds like you're doing a lot. So thank you.
Yeah, we didn't even, I didn't, you know, I can talk, but, uh, uh, we, we did 21 different events when I actually counted everything up. I didn't talk about all that because I know we all, many of them are AVM. So I know we're on, I know how to time crunch here.
I have to say, um, I'm going to ask what Xavier did. So thank you. That makes, definitely makes sense, the whole school versus third, fourth. I didn't know that. So thank you. But also I really like what you said, Matt, about, um, it's not just about the numbers, you know? So they, I love that you guys are focusing on kids as humans, as little humans, not just numbers. And that even though that might not show in the data to that one child, that's a difference. And I'm sure there's a million things like that. I know you touched on that too. And, and I just love what another scenario are. That's right up my alley.
At the end of the day, we're raising humans. We're raising, you know, we want them to be successful in life.
Yeah.
Um, family specialist, have one this year?
No.
That was a reduction in the budget. The other things that she did when she was the fa, family specialist. So they have to pick up this slack now, um, as Josh said. I want to talk about Donna Marie Norton. She's one of our directors, but she comes to your building and she works with t, uh, students with whatever you call it.
Pre-quarter.
And she loves that. She tells me that she loves doing that. And, um, when I came to the end of the year ceremony with Dr. Barodi was there. On each of those students. So I just think having the director go down there, give up some of her time is good. Forgot to tell Bear Road, but this to me is important. Um, I do go on the calendar. I would appreciate, um, each building, let's go to, uh, go to Dr. Deal, that you send Jill the events that you have. For instance, literature night, the math night that John does that's phenomenal. Some of us would love to go to those things and, and, and Olivia was driving by, uh, uh, by KWS Bear Road and I saw all these cars. So I went in. It would help if, um, if we.
Okay.
Got a list, not everything, but some of us would like to come to the events. Thank you. Hi Jill.
Any other questions? Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, good to see everybody.
Okay, we have no comments from the audience this evening. We'll move right into Board of Education Committee reports. Mark was not at our last policy committee meeting, but reviewed a couple of, the committee recommends edits to, um, technology news policy and that'll be coming back to the committee for further discussion.
Hey, everyone. October 1st, we're going to have our legislative meeting. We're going to, um, have it a, an hour earlier. Thanks to Dr. Ward sending to each of us, you got a two-page, uh, thing about the referendum that's coming up on November 19th. I appreciate you looking that over that Dr. Uh, Ward gave you and he will be here to, uh, answer any questions. And we also have students that met with their principal and are going to talk a little bit about how we can increase voting registration. Um, and I would ask Matt and Dash and, uh, Dr. Ward and, uh, uh, Paul, he wasn't here tonight. Um, if you could please send Jill some topics that you want to look at. Dr. Cook has given three great topics, but if you have some topics that you really think that we need to look at, it would be great. Moving into BOSI's, well, I am just, BOSI's is my thing. BOSI's is my thing. And school is better with, I don't, that's our new motto at, um, at, uh, BOSI's, school is better with you. Um, we now have three students designated as board members. I've given the names to, uh, our high school representative. Uh, one is in CTE Auto, one is the New Vision Medical Program. Is that what your daughter was saying? Yep, there we go. She could have waited a year and been on our school board. And Innovation Tech. Um, this Saturday, uh, Richard will be, uh, at, uh, BOSI's where, uh, the New York's, no, excuse me. Central New York School Boards Association is hosting, uh, workshop from 10:30 to 3:30 and they promised to teach very well for Richard to let you know. Um, for all the students to be in together to talk about what it's like. Richard volunteered to be on a committee and I believe, uh, Superintendent Viva will be on that committee. Um, so that students have questions about what your responsibility is. So looking forward to it. The one I am really, really, really excited about is the Board of Regents will be having their meeting October 6th at OCMBOSI. So, um, Fisherner, the whole entire Board of Regents is coming to BOSI's, uh, to have their meeting. And I get to sit there and I'm just thrilled about that. This Friday, the 26th, the New York School Boards Association is moving into central New York for their governance leadership program for superintendents and board presidents. And I'm looking forward to that.
Dr. Ward.
Thank you. Uh, I just have a couple of quick things, um, this evening. For those of you who don't know, uh, Chalk the, Chalk the Walk Week, um, is, um, we have a number of schools participating in that. It's, uh, the event to help raise awareness for suicide prevention by bringing students together to create positive messages that shine light on mental illness. So that's happening in our district. Also, uh, this week is, uh, Spirit Week and many of our schools, including CNS, uh, as we headed homecoming this Friday, we're very excited about that. And Friday Morning Lights, um, will be there, uh, uh, Friday morning, um, very early if you would like to, uh, tune in. And, uh, so we're excited about that. Um, and lastly, yeah, I have to move my glasses. Uh, John Di Bianco is still here. So I wanted to give, uh, uh, we've got some good news, um, recently. Um, uh, this is from the New York State Department of Education. Um, after reviewing your application and response, RFP 82, the New York State Education Department is pleased to inform you that it has tentatively awarded your organization a grant in the amount of $524,000, $524,000. Um, there are, there are some steps we need to take, um, with them, but honestly, I'll tell you a little story. Um, so Donna Marie Norton was in my office last week and, and she said to me, um, you know, there were some data that I got for that grant. But she said, I want to tell you, I told John Di Bianco she was crazy because we never get those grants. So we're just wasting our time. Um, but, uh, but so thank you for proving Donna Marie wrong. Um, and, uh, and helping us, um, get this award. And we'll have, um, you know, uh, um, we'll have plans and things like that in place. But, uh, obviously the social emotional well-being of our kids is important and this just helps us, uh, provide some of those, continue to provide some of those services. So thank you, John.
Go ahead.
Have any, uh, Board of Education comments?
Yeah, I, I would like to make a few comments and, um, I'm also sort of doing this on behalf of Paul since he's not here. Um, but, uh, him and I are going to be going to NISBA conference in New York City along with Dr. Ward at the end of next month. I'm excited that I'm going to be able to go, although I won't be there the whole time, um, because as you all know, that's kind of my busy season. But I'm making it down there and, um, I also wanted to, uh, quickly highlight the retreat that we did on Saturday. Um, I wanted to give a big thank you to, uh, Dr. Jason Andrews who had high, uh, really big shoes to fill for our last individual who helped us out with a retreat and I think he did an excellent job. And, and one of the things that really stuck with me is that, you know, as a board, just like any other organization should, saying that you're good really isn't just good enough and we should always be looking at how we can improve. And, you know, one of the things that, uh, Dr. Andrews talked about was, you know, not just doing this when there's a new member or when there's a new issue that comes up and really continuing to do that. And I think it's important that we're really, uh, actually looking at who we are as board members and how we can continue to better serve our community. And, uh, you know, what we're supposed to do, what we're not supposed to do and all of that stuff. Um, so I just wanted to say thank you. And, um, you know, we had a couple of folks who couldn't make it and I think that if, you know, it, it would be worth trying to, uh, get the information that was presented to us because it was really impactful and, um, I think will help us be a better board and steer the district in a better direction.
I didn't talk at all last. You know, a lot of things are happening in our district. Matt's still here. I was able to attend a lot of the back-to-school barbecues and events. Went to Gillette Middle School. I mean, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of kids going to see, meeting their teachers, and what, all the PTOs, the amount of work that the PTOs and PTA's did. Went to Rox Middle, Rox Elementary, Allen Road, and Lake Shore. I didn't make it to the rest of them, but I feel it's important, board member, to go to some of these things, and I'm trying to pick up T-shirts from all of them. And anyway, Cross Country Meet versus Liverpool, just an interesting thing to go to, I've been in a football game out to Arrowhead, and I don't know much about the scoring. Dr. Barodi, but I guess.
Two, the bottom.
Well, anyway, boys got sixteen, so they, they really whipped Liverpool, sorry. And the girls did very well, too. Field hockey, I went to that game, we won three-nothing, sorry, Dr. Ward over Bevo, your old, whatever. And then the Starburst Show that you and I attended with the North Stars, and that was a huge event. I am following Bevo, though they're doing really well. Anyway, it's, it's great, the activities. Also tennis, they're anxious to get on the real courts at the high school, Don, and they understand that they can't because of construction, but they keep looking at them, and, and the ones over here are doing great. So our schools are doing really well. Thank you.
Bridget?
Well, first, I would like to highlight the webinar I attended last week for student board members. As Mr. Kevtree said, I'm going to a conference this Saturday, but the webinar really was very insightful. They did not have a lot of student speakers, but there were like, maybe like, you would think like four hundred people that attended, and it was wonderful. They had a lot of, well, telling you like how to do it and talking about how new it is. So we're still obviously figuring stuff out, but it was great. So just, that was wonderful. Also, I think that from the high school, I'm seeing like more and more, we're seeing like not great behavior. Just as the school year progresses, especially with the lack of cell phones, teachers are getting a little more, they're getting more slack. I know a lot of science teachers have people take out their phones and take pictures of labs, or in study halls, everyone, the teachers let you take out your phone and do whatever you want on your phone, because it's a study hall, or whatever it may be. And obviously, I'm not trying to be a snitch or anything, but it has been very rampant and common in the high school for teachers to kind of let you do what to do on your phone. No one, and I'm sure any teacher that has the cellphone duty at the end of the day with the unlocking devices can tell you day by day, less and less kids are unlocking their yonder pouches, because less and less kids are putting them in the yonder pouches. So I think it really starts with the teachers, and ninety-nine percent of teachers are doing a great job with it. But it's that one percent that really affects us and really makes kids think, oh, it's okay if I'm on my phone.
Creation of group of minutes from September eighth, do I have a motion to approve those? Mark, Mandy, any questions? All those in favor? I'll take these together, the consideration classification. Beth and Josh, those in favor? Acknowledgement of the business office reports for June of two thousand twenty-five, do I have a motion to acknowledge those? Beth, Mandy, all those in favor? Declaration of marketable and non-marketable surplus, do I have a motion to that? Mark and Josh, all those in favor? Question action items, resolution to approve the lead evaluators, teachers, do I have a motion to approve that? Beth, Mark, any questions? All those in favor? Same to approve a resolution on lead evaluator, do I have a motion to that resolution? Resolution to create and abolish a meeting operation? Motion to approve that right? Mark, any questions? Acknowledgement of gifts, the North City Central School District, applies in the amount of two hundred dollars. Dollar general store located at six forty-six Gap Road, collect items to customers for donation. Donation group, the Roxspur Road Elementary School, for district. Thank them for that. Do I have a motion to approve that? All those in favor? Resolution to approve representative for the Air Court Authority. Next, amend appointment of school position established. Those in favor? I have a random of appointment. Education Associated, do I have a motion to approve? Questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to ask, and I know that we went over this during the budget process, but how many are of the teachers on special assignment are doing this, the consultant teachers? Do you have a number? There's three. Okay, I, I couldn't remember what it was, so I just was curious, trying to do the math in my head today. Thank you.
One at Roxspur Road Elementary, one at Roxspur Road Middle School, and two at the. Are. Questions or comments? Need an executive session? Oh, can I have, sorry. Can I have a motion to approve the agreement between the. Health affected nine. Action, any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, and, and I know that you all are doing a fantastic job trying to do whatever we can to get people hired within the district, and I just hope that we will continue to do that and not get into a situation where we're subcontracting when we don't have to. But I know the market is what it is right now, so I just wanted to put that out there. It felt like I had to say that.
All those in favor? I have a motion to accept L. Report staff. Questions or comments? Executive session for the purpose of doing one personnel matter with no action to follow. I have a question. Sure, any questions? Thank you very much. Okay. Next.